Let's get started, everyone. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Southfield City Council. Agenda for City Council for May 26, 2020, 6:00 PM via teleconference. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Right, just a reminder, if we can get our phones muted, we're hearing some early feedback on the line, if everyone can use their phone. Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskin?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Here.
Taylor? Taylor? I know she was here.
She was on just a moment ago. She may have had to step away, but I know-
Cruz?
Present.
Mr. President, you do have a call, and we will temporarily excuse Councilwoman Taylor, I know she was just on. And we also do have our Mayor, Jensen Cyron, on the line. Our City Administrator, Frederick Zorn, City Attorney Don King, Mike Ratcliffe from assessing, and Shelley Freeman is on the line. And our Deputy City Administrator, John McRean, and a couple other staff members. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor is on the line.
We got you back.
We got you back. Technical difficulties here.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you. All right, well, we just have a couple items that we need to handle, two public hearings, and then two other items for discussion and potentially action this evening. So we'll jump right into it. Item A is a public hearing for Dems Development Group to establish an industrial development district under Public Act 198.
Good evening.
On 26555, I'm sorry, Shelley, Northwestern Highway. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Honorable Board, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting on May 4, 2020, Dems Group and Morelli North America submitted a request to establish an industrial development district for the future home of their corporate headquarters at 26555 Northwestern Highway. This request is to seek the real and personal property, 50% of the real and 50% of their personal property exemption, under Michigan Public Act 198 as amended. On the call, we have Jean Spector from Morelli North America and Brad Migdill. They're going to be doing a short presentation. After the presentation, we're going to request a public hearing for the development district. After that, we will ask for City Council to vote on that item. Mike Ratcliffe is also on the call, if we have any questions. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Spector and Mr. Migdill. Go ahead, Jean.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. This is Jean Spector speaking. On behalf of Morelli, I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here today and for your consideration. Shelley, if you could go to the next page, please.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay.
So maybe I'm a little delayed because I'm watching this online, so I apologize. But I will give a very brief overview of Morelli and who we are, and then I will hand it over to Brad, who will go through the rest of the presentation. So again, thank you very much for having us this evening. Morelli is a company that just celebrated our one-year anniversary on May 2 of last year. Prior to that, we were two separate companies. Magnetti Morelli, that celebrated our 100th year last year, and Chalston Conce, that celebrated our 80th year the year before. And as I said, both companies were acquired and were merged to form the Morelli Group on May 2 of last year. We are currently the seventh-largest independent supplier globally. We have approximately 160 plants and 62,000 people globally. And what we are doing here is creating the headquarters for our group in the Southfield location, where we're bringing together the two companies from the former Magnetti Morelli and from the former Chalston Conce. So we are bringing three locations under one roof to be housed in Southfield. And with that, Brad, I will hand it over to you to run through the rest of it. Shelley, can we go to the next slide, please?
Southside.
Okay, we're there. Okay, perfect. I'm a little delayed, so I apologize for that. So ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council President, thank you again for your time. You know, as we discussed, Morelli engaged with Wicked to do a full site search, and when we did the full site search, we looked at how can we be committed to our customers and growing our customer base? And we analyzed, you know, the differences between the Midwest and Southeast. We felt that Southfield was the center of it all. When we looked at Michigan and understanding the engineering talent and the production talent, not only coming from the great universities within the Midton State, but all the other folks that have come from everywhere, that we were able to pull great talent from as local as Lawrence Tech and as far as Northern Michigan University. The one place that everybody wanted to be was in Detroit, in the Detroit metro area, but more specifically Southfield. With that great highway visibility and our ability to attract talent from all over, we felt that Southfield would be the right place for our home. More fitting is, obviously, on the corner of the service drive of Northwestern Highway was this beautiful place that we'll be able to have for our customers to see us as they drive up and down the large freeway and Northwestern Highway, all the way into the city and back and forth, but also allowing Southfield to be the commitment of ours. So we just felt that this was a wonderful opportunity, one that was too good to pass up, and have decided to potentially put, you know, to have Southfield as our home. So go to the next slide, Shelley.
Southside.
Okay. As we kind of looked at everything, so we engaged in conversation with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the city of Southfield, and along with their partners in Oakland County, and reached an agreement to, for an incentive offer of a PA 198, as Shelley wanted to, brought up earlier. But one, I think, the most important point that I wanted to make about this is that the PA 198 is a partnership of us growing with you together. Not only is the asset being revitalized, and we'll have a bustling commitment of, as Jean mentioned, 400-plus employees, almost close to 500 employees, headquarters or later employees, but we'll also drive visitors and people coming to Southfield, Michigan, to be at the center of it all. With that location affords us opportunities with restaurants, hotels, and the ability to do it, it's also going to help us drive the assessed valuation of the asset. We view Southfield as providing this incentive as a partner. As we grow through time, the two parties will share together. Not only will they share just in effect of the area that would be occupied by Morelli, but will also share in the additional revitalization and occupancy of the asset that is going with the vacant part that Dems will be completing as well. I'll go to the next slide.
Southside.
Okay. So as we would occupy the asset at 26555 Northwestern Highway, the lease will be for 188,000 square feet, as Jean mentioned, with 458 full-time headquarters employees. And the building will be Morelli North America's headquarters and will serve as a talent-attraction asset and a destination point for customers and vendors from all over the world.
Next slide.
I think our excitement and thanks, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
We're extremely excited to use this asset and transform Federal Mogul into Morelli, and Morelli is excited to lift off as a new company in Southfield with a great storied history with automotive, you know, from the past and into the future. And I know that Shelley shared a video with you earlier of what our technological capabilities, but Morelli is a seventh-largest automotive supplier, but also on the cutting edge of electronics and technology. And I have the pleasure of sitting on the phone with them every Friday and seeing how cutting-edge and how great the design is going to be inside the facility, providing state-of-the-art workplace that's going to drive talent for future generations to come.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Jean.
So we-
Mr. President, at this time, we would like to hold the public hearing.
Okay. So at this moment, as requested, we'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda, I think the information's been made available to call in to make those comments, and I do believe that we have some people already prepared to make comments. You will have three minutes when you give your comments.
Give me one second. It looks like a couple calls dropped, so give me one second for these individuals. One second.
Sure.
We're ready, Mr. President.
Okay. Please go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Dale Allen Guyer from Lawrence Tech University in Southfield. Do you need my home address?
That's fine.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. So I'm also the Chair of the Architecture Department over there. I'm a professor of architecture, have been for 20 years, where I teach architectural history classes. I've written some books on history, including a book on Minori Yapsaki, who designed the Reynolds Aluminum Building. I'm also a member of the Southfield Historic District Commission and the Historic Designation Advisory Board, the State of Michigan Historic Preservation Review Board, and the local chapter of Dokomomo, Dokomomo, Michigan. So you might imagine that I'm really interested in historic buildings and in their preservation. And that's the reason why I wanted to comment this evening, is I really applaud the Morelli Company for their decision to use an existing building and to refurbish an existing building rather than trying to build something from scratch and to recognize the heritage of this place. I totally support their getting the tax abatement. I think, I would imagine their plans to remodel the interior are wonderful, but I'm concerned about the exterior. And I would like to voice my concern and my asking that the company please think about alternative designs for that facade. The jewel box in particular area has a real character to it. In fact, in the preservation business, we call it a character-defining element because it's so important to the building that if you take it away, the building loses itself. And so we have a lot of kind of modernist glass and steel boxes around. It's tough to make them interesting. It's difficult for a suburb or a suburban city to give itself an identity. And I think Southfield really has done that with its mid-century modernist campaign and making people aware of this wonderful legacy of buildings in the city, one of which is the Federal Mogul Building. And so I would just encourage Morelli to please review all possible options for thinking about the redesign of that building, including saving that jewel box facade in some way. They recognize that it is a great spot, it has wonderful visibility, but part of that visibility is what people are used to and have seen for decades coming down the highway. To see that building, it's a local landmark, and I think it's worth thinking about how we might be able to preserve that. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we have one more one second.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jabul Meyer. I'm a Business Development Manager of Oakland County's Economic and Community Affairs Department. On behalf of Oakland County, I'd like to offer our full support for Morelli's continued investment in Oakland County and Southfield. Morelli has been a valuable asset to the community, and we are thankful for their decision to choose a former Federal Mogul Building in Southfield for their new North American headquarters. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we have one more one second.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jabul Meyer. I'm a Business Development Manager of Oakland County's Economic and Community Affairs Department. On behalf of Oakland County, I'd like to offer our full support for Morelli's continued investment in Oakland County and Southfield. Morelli has been a valuable asset to the community, and we are thankful for their decision to choose a former Federal Mogul Building in Southfield for their new North American headquarters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments that we have? Any other people on the line?
Yep, we got, we have, we have one more, Mr. President. One second.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ruth Mills. I am, I'm actually from Itzvalanti, Michigan. I am the President of the Michigan Chapter of Dokomomo U.S. We are a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to documenting and conserving modernist architecture and design. And as Dale mentioned, he is on our board as well. I was also the author of the documents that recently resulted in the listing of the Northland Gardens and Plum Brook neighborhoods in the National Register of Historic Places. So I'm really interested in what's happening in Southfield. Our organization recently learned of Morelli's plan to lease the former Federal Mogul Building in Southfield for its North American headquarters. Like Dale, we were really thrilled that this plan is going to revitalize such an iconic vacant historic building. Federal Mogul was one of many corporations to relocate to Southfield in the 1960s and 1970s, but I think that Federal Mogul Building is perhaps one of the most distinctive of the many great examples of architecture. This design was by Gittles and Rossetti Architects, which was a Michigan firm, and it won several awards, including an AI in Michigan Honorable Mention and an AIA Detroit Award of Merit. And it was particularly distinguished by that glazed curtain wall with the floors that were enclosed in that modular precast concrete frame balanced over a recessed curtain wall, and that really makes the building appear as if it's floating from a loveste landscape. And indeed, as Brad noted in his presentation, this really is a beautiful building that's highly visible from the highways, and that's part of what attracted you to it. So, so again, you know, we recognize that the stewardship of historic buildings requires sensitive upgrades to ensure their viability for continued use. But like Dale, we're very concerned that this redesign includes replacing that iconic exterior with what really is a generic glass wall facade, and really strips away everything that makes this building so unique. So, you know, as Dale said, we're urging Morelli to really consider this plan to hit exterior redesign. We have many examples here in Southeast Michigan of corporations that have embraced the historic character of the building, successfully adapted them for contemporary use while preserving those historic features, you know, places like One Woodward in Detroit and the GM Technical Center in Warren. Southfield is really recognized around the world for the quality and concentration of its mid-century modern design, and it's buildings like Federal Mogul that help to create the unique sense of place that attracts the businesses and residents to the city and really distinguishes it from other cities. So we're hoping that you agree with us that this character really is worth preserving. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other callers while the public hearing is still open? If there are any other callers that have not already called in, please do so immediately, or else we will be moving forward.
Mr. President, we don't have any more callers, sir.
Okay. All right, then, I would like to deem this public hearing closed, and we will move to council for questions. And I'll just ask the first one, because I keep hearing this term, "historical." But can we get clarity on the fact, does this building have a historical, a formal historical designation, or is it just historical based on the amount of years it's been there?
This, this property doesn't, this is Shelley Freeman, this property does not have a historic designation. It is, has a significant history, however, in the mid-century modern movement, but it was never designated as historic.
Just, just for point of clarity. Thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Taylor this evening. Are there any questions or comments that you have on this item?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have several, actually. The plan itself is not my issue. I would welcome it with 100%. I'm looking forward to it if this goes forward. What I am, and what I liked when I was listening to the gentleman, I think his name is Mr. Spector, and Brad, is that they were looking for a partnership. Even though this building is not designated as a historical building, it is and does have historical value to the city of Southfield. It is a landmark. People know it by, know the city of Southfield by this landmark. The lattice that they are considering removing is iconic, and people want to keep that design. So I have thought in my mind, we only received this last, a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know if a discussion has been had between the Morelli and Dems and the city of Southfield, if you've had an earnest discussion on how, you know, maybe there's a way that you could do what you need to do, modernize the building, and still keep the lattice design. I don't know, but I would ask if that would be something that would be possible, that we have that kind of conversation, before we just, you know, say no to everything. I mean, we are in partnership, we do want the company in the city of Southfield, but at the same time, if we could keep some of our history, that would be a wonderful thing for us. And again, I, I only heard of this project last, the last time on May 4 or whenever it was brought to us. And even at that time, I was told, if I remember correctly, that we were only discussing the personal property. And at that time, I remember saying, well, when it comes to site plan, I have a lot more questions. But between then and now, I've had an opportunity to hear far more about this building, and we're looking forward to the company coming in. There's, you know, there's no doubt that we welcome you. We're just asking if we could have a conversation and see if there's a way, is there any way possible that we can maintain the lattice on that, just those two sides of the building, so that there's a way for that to be kept.
Councilwoman Taylor, this is Shelley. I would like Mr. Spector, Jean Spector, to respond to your statement, if that's okay?
Okay.
Hello, and again, I wish that we could all be in person for this, because these conversations are certainly, I think, always better in a face-to-face setting rather than a virtual setting, but I will respond nonetheless. I guess a few comments I'd like to make. The first is, you know, all three callers basically hit one of the points that really make us want to make a change to the building. Everyone calls this the Federal Mogul Building, and to be very frank, it's no longer Federal Mogul that will be in that building, and we are a new company that's born of two very historic companies also, and we want it to be known as the Morelli Building going forward. So that's, you know, one of those items that as long as the building has the look and the feel of the old, it will, for many years, be known as the Federal Mogul Building, and that is certainly, from a corporate standpoint, a point that is very real to us. The other thing, I just want to be very transparent with everyone. When we took a look at this building originally, we originally didn't, and still, for the immediate time, don't need that jewel box. And there was a discussion about tearing down the jewel box altogether. And after we talked about that, we really decided that that would not be the right thing to do, and it was not the way that we wanted to come into the city either. So we decided that we needed to modernize the appearance of that building, give it our own look, and give it the look of a high-tech company that we are. But we even took it then one step further before coming onto the final design that was on the previous slide. We actually looked at four different designs with the architects, and I don't remember if it was two or three of them tried to keep the lattice. And everything that we looked at, from a corporate image standpoint, did not allow us to take out of the building and to give the image that we would like to give. So I just, you know, I don't want there to be anyone that thinks that this was an easy decision for us to make, or that we didn't try to do everything we could to save the look as it currently is. But after a very, very long discussion and after many rounds, the decision has been made to go forward. So I just want to be very, very transparent and very honest with everyone in that keeping the lattice is not an option. I mean, we have all settled, including our senior global leadership, on the rendering that you have in front of you here on screen, and this is the decision from a corporate standpoint that we have decided to go with.
Thank you, Jean.
I'm just going to, and Shelley, I just want to add something. I mean, members of the council, I just want to make it really apparent that we are in a changing and evolving world, and, you know, suburban office is going to potentially come back to the forefront. And this is a, you know, this is, the image that this creates is the welcoming of technology in future. I mean, you could look at the Apple headquarters, you could look at Google's headquarters, you could look at what all these technology companies are doing. Morelli is a technology company, and to Jean's point, you know, growing up in Detroit, and I'm being born and raised in Southfield, you know, knowing that that was always a Federal Mogul Building, not how it's going to be hopefully known as Morelli Building forever and forever going forward, and that's the image that it creates. And it's the same connotation that you have, it's the Empire State Building, Sears Tower, you know, even though the corporate sponsorships have changed time and time again, people will now recognize this as a Morelli Building, and it gives this great beacon of the future for Southfield, and it really shows it, this is technology at the center of it all. And when you start looking at that street, particularly with, you know, Dur being right there and Morelli there, it's really creating a brand for the world to see that Southfield is the home of the future of automotive.
Thank you.
Thank you to both of you. Again, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand it completely. I was one of the people that worked in the Federal Mogul Building, and even though you're going to, you're going to change the, the structure and make it more, with more glass and that, people still will refer to it for a long time as the old Federal Mogul Building. Time will get rid of that. You, the company, will get rid of that. It's not what the outside necessarily looks like that reminds people, it's what's in it and what you're going to be doing for the community. That partnership, and you saying, you will make the name for that building yourself. You will be the ones that will have the change from, oh, the old Federal Mogul Building, to, hey, that's the new Morelli Corporation. That's what's going to change, that you yourself. And we want to be a partner, we, the city of Southfield, want to partner with you in doing that, because we have the development team that can help you get your name on everything that you want it to be on, and that building will stand out as a Morelli Building. And that's all I'm trying to say, is that if there's a way for that to still happen, you know, we're going to be there to partner with you to get your name out on it anyway, because that's just what we do. But, but the company, you, the company is what's going to make, make that building known as the Morelli Building.
And I sincerely appreciate the comments and the partnership that I am sure that we're going to have, and the excellent relationship that Morelli and the city of Southfield will have going forward. But really, I mean, I, I really try to do everything in the most transparent and clear way possible, and I, and I don't want there to be any sort of, any sort of feeling that we are going to look at anything different. So very respectfully to everyone, we will not be keeping the lattice.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. I do appreciate that, and thank you for your explanation. I have nothing else, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Morris?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Spector, for your presentation. I really appreciate your transparency and your comments relating to your desire to improve your company's self-identity as well as the brand identity. Again, when we talked about this previously, I did share that I was in support of the project. I do think that the new design is consistent with the other tech buildings and companies off of Northwestern Highway. I do have a question relating to the number of employees. I think that was you, Mr. Spector. uh, off of, uh, Northwestern Highway. Uh, I do have a question relating to, uh, the number of, uh, employees. You, I think that was you, Mr. Specter, you stated that, uh, approximately 458 employees would be, uh, relocating to Southfield. Um, how many of those are existing employees? I'm just wondering, you know, how many jobs will be new?
So these are all existing employees that we are bringing from two facilities in Auburn Hills and one facility in, in Farmington Hills. Um, so these are, uh, we are basically combining three buildings into one. And this number of 458 or so, um, is the current workforce.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. No further questions for me, Mr. President.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yeah, thank you. Um, my, my questions were similar to, uh, Ms. Taylor, and, uh, they have been answered as well. Um, so I, I really have no, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Yeah, my concern, uh, Councilwoman Taylor also voiced some of the, the questions, concerns that I had as well. But I, too, don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, um, I was on mute. Um, I, I have a couple of questions. A couple of them might be, well, technical relative to the document. But with respect to, um, the appearance of the building, um, everybody knows this. I've worked with three of the largest companies in the world in my life. And I always felt good driving up to the building that I worked in. And so if, uh, and I'm a, I'm a strong believer that employees have to feel good going into that building or getting up in the morning, driving to that location. So I'm, I'm of the mind that, uh, if Morelli believes that this will satisfy their employees, you know, satisfy their mission, I'm, I'm with it, with that, uh, that, that thought pattern. So, but the question that I have is, and perhaps, uh, Michael and/or Shelley can answer this. Uh, and I know this, but I just want to get, get rea- get it, get it reen-. How, how is the state making us whole again? With, this is, this is reference to the fifth paragraph on the, on the first page.
So the city of Southfield is made whole in terms of the personal property taxes that are collected? And so regarding the personal property, um, we get a base value. And so there's gonna be no change to that. Regarding the, the real property, the city, as this project is redeveloped, um, we're gonna be gaining a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year approximately while partnering with Morelli, giving them a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So if nothing happens to the property, we don't get anything for that difference. We're still gonna be getting the balance of real property on the, on the rest of the property that they're not leasing at the rate that they've been paying. So that's how that lays out. And Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
Just to clarify on the personal property, you know, our personal property value as of 2012, uh, the, the SEV taxable value at that time is what we're guaranteed. So anytime, uh, with, with, with the reduction in the small business tax and the, uh, EMPP loss, the state is making us whole on that. So whatever we're at in 2012 is what we're guaranteed by the state.
Okay, that, that was my next question. Why, why does 2012 pop up on that?
Right.
Okay, so the next question, um, on the, on the, uh, second page of the presentation, in the third paragraph, it says, should that be 2021? Um, because exemption 12 years beginning in 2020. That should be 2021, right? That's on the third paragraph of the second page of the presentation.
Oh, I believe so. Mike, the taxes that start for next year or this year?
Uh, well, no, the, the construction will not begin or the, the new investment will be for the 21 year. So it'll begin for two, 2021 will be the first year.
So that was a typo, yeah?
So that's, that, that will be changed.
Correct.
That will be right.
Okay, okay, so that will be changed. All right, the, the next question I have on this, down, down at the bottom, we have those, um, bullet points, A through F.
Yes.
And it says, it says B through F, uh, is pretty much, uh, satisfied with this. Um, why, why would you leave A out? I mean, A, that, that, that seemed like a, a good reason to, to, to enforce this also. Why, why was A left out?
Um, that was reduced property taxes, it's an obstacle to development. Um, I, I guess, no particular reason. I think it's more just talking about the, it, that also could, could count towards this as well. So no particular reason, yeah?
Okay, I guess, okay then, well, um, but, okay, that, that is my question, Mr. Chip. I'm, I am supportive of this project. And, um, I've visited that building numerous times when I was working. And I, I liked the building. And in that auditorium, we would, uh, have, uh, several meetings there in auditorium. It was, it was a nice facility. So, um, as I said, welcome to Southfield. Mr. Chair, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Uh, and Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Taylor, um, asked my question, so, and it was answered. But I, I just want to confirm also, um, for the record, both the personal property and, um, and all real taxes are paid current to date on this property?
It's, yes, the last time I, I had, uh, reviewed this, it was up to date. That's correct. Um, the, through the December bill, right. So, uh, this new tax year is all new, which, uh, is still payable. 2020.
Okay.
So we are current.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Banks. Uh, was there anyone else on the call that had any comments or questions before we move forward?
Um, Mr. Cruz, this is.
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I have spoken with, um, Jean Specter and I've spoken with, um, Ryan Dems, uh, the owner of the building. Um, I am very pleased that Morelli, uh, would want to come to Southfield. I understand why they would want to come, uh, was the center of it all. And they'll be a fine addition to our, um, auto-related, uh, portfolio. Um, I've expressed to all of you, um, my disappointment, um, with altering the facade of the building. Um, we market this city. Um, uh, one of our marketing tools is our mid-century modern collection. Um, as, um, you've heard from both, um, Professor Geyer and, uh, Architect Ruth Mills. Um, I, I feel, um, that, uh, they're being insensitive, uh, to, um, they're coming into our community and destroying something that, um, personally I feel has value. Um, uh, and I've seen other corporations, uh, particularly the GM Tech Center, do a wonderful job of, uh, keeping, um, uh, the 60-year-old mid-century buildings and retrofitting them, uh, to, uh, current needs and uses. Uh, I, um, I asked for a compromise. They indicate that their compromise is, well, we didn't tear the building down. I don't find that a compromise whatsoever. Um, so I, um, while I'm, I'm glad to have Morelli, uh, come into Southfield, I would support the financial incentive. Uh, I'm very unhappy with, uh, their decision to alter the facade. I think it's just plain wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so hearing those comments, uh, and I would just add to it, just that I, I'm very pleased with this as well. Uh, it seems that most of the council is. Um, while we might have sentimental attachments or whatnot to certain things within our city, we can also be the leader in some other areas as well, too. So while that may have been a leader at its time in terms of the type of structure it was, uh, we can be a leader in moving forward at the type of structure that comes forward for the future. And so, uh, I appreciate the council's progressiveness in their thinking, uh, in moving forward with this. So, um, um, Ms. Freeman, your request for this evening?
Mr. Cruz, I request that, um, you take action on the resolution approving the establishment of the Industrial Development District under Public Act 198, um, 426-555 Northwestern Highway.
All right. Um, council, I'll entertain a motion. Council, hello?
Mr. President, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I was on mute.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, the, uh, resolution to establish an industrial development district, um, under Public Act, for the address of 26555 Northwestern Highway.
Support. Support. They're moved by Mr. Bandelbaum and supported by Mr. Brightwell that we approve the resolution to establish an industrial development district under Public Act 198 at 26555 Northwestern Highway. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes. Resolution adopted for the development of the Industrial Development District under Public Act 198 of 1974.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I would like to request, um, city council open a public hearing for Morelli North America Inc. for their application for industrial, um, facilities exemption certificate at that location.
Okay. All right, with the request then made by Ms. Freeman, I would like to open a public hearing for Marinelli North America, uh, to grant the application for industrial facilities exemption certificate. We'll open up the public hearing. For those that would wish to call in to speak on this particular matter, you will have three minutes.
Uh, Mr. President, we'll keep the line open right now. We don't have anyone. We'll keep the line open for a minute, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, given our previous vote on item A, I would just go to entertaining a motion unless there was any.
Mr. President, can you for- Mr. President, could you just formally close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, the public hearing is now closed. Um, again, as I was stating, given our previous vote on item A, I would entertain a motion unless there was any, any council member that wished to speak.
Mr. President, this is Councilman Morris. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution from Morelli North America to seek application for industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Support. They're moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the application for industrial facilities exemption certificate for Marinelli North America. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum? Mandelbaum?
Yes, sorry.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Resolution passed for Marinery North America, application for industrial facilities exemption certi- certificate.
All right, thank you very much. And, uh, thank you all, the representatives from Marinelli as well. Welcome to Southfield.
And thank you very much, uh, for all your support as well. We look, uh, we're very excited to be in Southfield and we look forward really to building a great relationship with the city. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
And thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Okay, we'll move on. We have two other items for discussion this evening. Uh, first one is a presentation and discussion, uh, regarding temporary approval for our door, outdoor dining spaces and grooming stations.
Primarily for restaurants, barbers, stylists and nail salons, um, to be able to expand some of their indoor operations to the exterior of their building. Um, and it would result in a reduction of fees from both the planning department as part of our internal review and approval, as well as reduction in fees for building department tent permits. Um, we would also, um, commit to an expedited review process, um, by both the planning and building departments. Um, and we have a goal of one week. And, uh, just also, if, uh, council could, uh, you know, keep in mind, this is not, um, the intent is not to supersede any sort of existing or, um, forthcoming state, state of Michigan requirements in terms of the businesses actually opening, um, and also any forthcoming regulations or, uh, on separation or occupancy restrictions, things like that, that, that might, um, come in the future. And, um, how we're looking to handle this would be, um, that the business much, must apply, um, every year. Of course, if they apply this year, um, their approval would be good from, from us for, um, up, up till October. And, um, and then would be good, like I said, just for the season. And then they would have to apply again annually. So next year, we could then kind of assess the situation, um, in terms of the, you know, seeing where we are with COVID and, um, seeing if that would make sense to, to allow for, um, an additional year. Um, and they would also have to meet, you know, all state barrier-free federal ADA requirements regarding accessibility and also meet all their state of Michigan building and fire code requirements. And also subject to some, uh, certain conditions that we've compiled as, in the planning department, um, in terms of specific requirements that we will, we will be looking for as, as part of our review process. Um, next slide, please. So this is just one example of what we're kind of, um, visualizing. Um, here, you know, we see, uh, elevated platform. We've got some separation railings. Obviously, there's, you know, the, the proper separation, table separation isn't in place here. Um, you know, masks, things like that. Um, but just to kind of give you an idea of what, what we're visualizing is, is part of this relief. Um, next slide, please. Here's, uh, just another example of an outdoor dining area. Um, again, it's a, another platform. It just shows, uh, some additional methods of separation, planter boxes, landscaping, um, and things like that. Uh, and the next slide, please. And then here is, um, just an example of an outside personal service, uh, business. And this is actually, this is from Kansas City, Missouri. This is a, um, a hairstylist who is offering this a creative method of, you know, allowing, uh, haircuts out in the parking lot. Um, obviously, we would require some additional separation from vehicular and pedestrian traffic, um, station-to-station separation, uh, masks. We would require some additional anchoring for the tents and canopies per building department regulations. But just to kind of give you a visualization of what we're, what we're proposing. And next slide, I think that might be it. Yeah, so, um, anyway, uh, as I stated, City Attorney King has come up with, uh, um, a resolution, draft resolution for, um, your consideration in terms of kind of this, getting this off the ground and to allow us to, um, proceed with, um, with starting to accept applications in this regard. And I'm, that concludes my presentation and, um, I'm available for any questions.
Um, just before we go through the questions, are you asking for action for tonight? Um, or, I mean, we can decide that if we want to, but I was curious, did, do you want to get this moving right away? Um, or something we take later?
If I might, yes, um, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, yes, I believe what, we are looking for some sort of action, um, so that we can start to, uh, help these businesses as soon as possible as it kind of, uh, starts to get into the, the season for outside, outside dining and things like that, that, that they're all kind of situated in. as it kind of, uh, starts to get into the, the season for outsor- outside dining and things like that, that, that they're all kind of situated and ready to go.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Cause, uh, I'm thinking the same thing, depending on, you know, what the tenor of the council is, which I think is positive. We've kind of talked about this already. Starting to get warmer, so we might want to move as fast as we can. But, uh, we'll see what everybody else thinks. Uh, we'll start, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Um, I, I did have a, a few questions. I, I, I completely support this. I think it's a great idea to help our, our businesses. Um, did you, did you mention that some of the fees will be lower for those that want to add tents or outdoor seating or anything like that?
Uh, I think that. Uh, yes, we, we are looking at, um, re- reduction of, um, our planning department administrative site plan review, um, fees. And then the building department has also agreed to reduce their fees for their tent permits as well.
Do you know what that reduction is?
Um, yes. So we're looking at typically for, um, our administrative site plan review fee, it would be seven hundred and ninety dollars. Um, we would accept a two hundred and ninety dollar fee as well, uh, or, you know, in, in place of, in lieu of the seven ninety. And then, um, for the tent permit, um, it's my understanding that it would be reduction in fee from three hundred and ninety dollars, uh, to ninety dollars plus the one hundred and fifty dollar refundable bond for the applicants.
Okay. And, and I couldn't, I'm, I'm looking at the resolution now and I did not see it. How long is this, um, temporary approval going? I didn't see a, a specific end date.
Sure. So, um, it would be April for, from April through October of this year. And then the applicants would have to reapply next year, um, so that we kind of can assess, um, where we are and if it would be something that would even make sense next, you know, during next year's, um, April through October season. But for, at least if that process is already in place, that's something that, um, you know, it, it, we could, we could start to assess them on an annual basis.
Okay. So you said, so it would go from April till October twenty twenty?
Right.
And, and you're saying April, so anyone who's paid fees in April will get a refund?
Um, we have not had anybody apply yet.
Okay. Um, uh, so I guess, um, and maybe this is a, a, a question for the city attorney. Do we need to add those dates into this resolution?
Hi, this is, uh, new chair. So when I initially did this, um, because I wanted it to, you know, relate to COVID nineteen, the emergency, that's why I did not put a specific date in there, but said it was subject to the building and planning department, but we could add those dates. I just wanted to make sure that in doing this, that we, um, had it such that it was related, uh, that was related to the emergency and everything that happened with COVID nineteen, but we definitely should, um, you know, change it to be more specific.
Okay. Thank you. And then Sarah, my, my last question for you is, um, as it relates to parking. So if, if a business has, um, parking and let's say they're, it's a barber shop and they take up four to five parking spaces in a, in a outdoor mall or, or an area and then that would affect the parking ratio, is that something that will be temporarily relieved as well?
Yes. So, um, basically what we're looking for is, um, you know, a twenty-five to fifty percent increase in table capacity for restaurants, um, or, uh, for chairs, um, chairs and stations for salon uses. And the logic behind that was that most likely, um, there will be some separation requirements, um, on the interior, which is going to prevent them from full occupancy. Um, so that most likely will take care of kind of the parking issues. So maybe any reduction in parking, um, that may take, be taken up with tables or, uh, chairs. Um, they're going to be lessening the occupancy inside the building anyway. And then also, you know, we kind of have the factor there, there may be people who just are not, still not comfortable with, with this whole setup right now anyway. So that's kind of how we came up with, um, you know, the, uh, the certain percentage of increase for the table capacities or chairs. And we still don't feel that it would impact, um, with the, uh, parking availability at any particular site. But we also have kind of built in a, um, something to address any sort of nuisance situation, um, that may come up just in case we have some, um, specific sort of property that, that it may, you know, cause a prop- problem with parking um, in that, uh, we will make sure, we will contact the applicant and give them opportunity to mitigate any sort of negative impacts um, in terms of, you know, uh, parking issues or people parking maybe on residential side streets. Um, and, you know, we'll, they'll have to somehow mitigate the situation, reduce their exterior stations or tables. Um, and if they don't do, do so, then, you know, they could face, um, revocation of their temporary approval.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Uh, Mr. Haskins?
Uh, yeah. So during the, uh, so I was able to get, uh, kind of a, a preview of this in the legislative committee meeting. And Sarah, you said before to us, they actually kind of laid out, uh, a lot of the things that Councilman Mandelbaum was, was asking. The, the, the capacity, the fees and stuff like that. Um, it might, I don't know, this might be helpful, but maybe to send it out to the other, the council members as well. Um, I know that it, it, and it does answer a lot of the questions that I had at the time. And then I realized like, oh, there's a form that have, that has all those things on there. Um.
Yeah, yes, I believe, I, I believe, uh, Clerk Hawkins, uh, sent that out earlier today. But if not, I am happy to, I, I can absolutely send it.
All right. And, but beyond that though, I think this is great. This is definitely something that's timely and needed. Um, and I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to, uh, voting on it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Um, yeah, I think I, I did have questions about parking. Uh, but Sarah, I, I, in addition to that, um, I have a question about safety and traffic. Are we gonna get the, uh, this, because somebody is putting things on a parking lot. Uh, we have to make sure individuals are aware that this is a, a, a safety zone to some, because I want, it, um, well, what, what, well, I have my question directly. What are we doing to ensure safety? No one is, uh, rammed into, um, people cutting hair?
Yes. Um, we are, as part of our, um, proposed conditions and, and criteria and requirements, we are requiring that any sort of, um, exterior dining space or personal service station, um, it must be separated from any sort of sidewalks or driveways, um, by means of some of the examples that I had shown, um, landscaping, planter boxes, uh, fences, railings. These are all the requirements that are part of our current ordinance for outdoor dining areas, um, as it stands, you know, in our ordinance. So we're just expanding that to the other, uh, personal service stations. So, um, yes, we are going to, that's, you know, the plans that come in are going to be reviewed by, um, not only planning, but also the fire department and also the building department, um, so that we ensure that the, um, you know, the safety of the, of the outdoor stations, um, of the people, the patrons that are, um, you know, utilizing these outdoor stations. Um, their, their safety is obviously a, a major concern and, um, we want to make sure that they are as isolated as possible from, you know, both, you know, even pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic, yes.
Okay. No, no problem. That last slide with the outdoor hair facility, that, that, that meme popped up from a safety standpoint. There was no barriers around it. And so.
Right, correct.
You, you, okay. But, uh, this is very proactive and forward thinking, um, uh, and I'm, I would be a hundred percent supportive of this. I, I would like to see a rule ten on it, Mr. Chair. So, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, it's a special meeting, so no, no rule of ten is required. Just FYI.
Gotcha. Thank you. Ms. Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, Sarah, in addition to like the safety and traffic, what about like the cleanliness of the area? I'm just having a hard time visualizing, you know, example, haircutting or dog grooming. And I'm trying to think around the city where there are salons or, um, veterinarian places. I'm not really concerned about the restaurants that mu- that much because I can see them in the parking lot and separating the tables. But, you know, you don't want someone with long hair who's gonna have it cut short. And then if it's a windy day, the hair is gonna be blowing all over the place. Um, how are we gonna control that? And can you, can you give me an example of, like, somewhere in the city, maybe someone's even requesting this? Cause I know a few places around where I live, I just am having a hard time visually seeing how this could work. Maybe they could have one tent, but there's no way they could have multiple tents because there is not enough room for parking, traffic, you know, and the safety of the people.
Right. So we, you know, we did, um, stipulate the, uh, maximum number of, um, you know, increase for table capacity or, um, um, chairs would be up to fifty percent. And again, that's with, um, kind of keeping in mind most likely the, um, forthcoming separation requirements that are most likely going to be coming down from the state as part of these businesses reopening. So we're anticipating that that, um, the fifty percent increase on the exterior is gonna basically just make up for the reduction of tables and spaces on the interior. Um, we do as part of our, uh, proposed requirements. Also, you know, we are requiring that all, um, outdoor dining areas and service stations must be maintained in a clean and orderly manner. And, um, any nuisance, again, any nuisance situations that arise, I mean, that, that, you know, not only goes for something that may affect the availability of parking, but also, you know, anything, like you stated, if it's, if it ends up being kind of a chaotic situation, if there are, you know, capes and hair and, you know, if, if it starts to become a cleanliness problem, um, they will be notified and they will, uh, be expected to mitigate that in a timely manner. And, um, if not, then they will have to cease their operations and remove all their equipment from the exterior.
And I think we have to be extra sensitive to example, they, the salons, you know, and the veterinarians that might be trimming, you know, dog hairs, you know, being near a restaurant. But then also, you know, example in the, um, the slides that you showed us, these pop-up tents, while they look pretty, if we have a high wind, those things can blow. So we've got to ensure that they're really strongly secured. I mean, I've seen a lot of dams with tents flying and people getting injured. I mean, a day like today, of, of course, there's no problem, but if, and I don't know if they'll be required to take it down in the evening, you know, put them up, you know, in the daytime or, you know, if you even look at that.
Yes. Oh, yeah. We, we, yeah, we had, Terry and I had that discussion, um, regarding, you know, taking things down at night. And, and, oh, for just, for going back to the, um, tent anchoring, I, I apologize that, um, these, uh, I, that you don't have the, the proposed policies. But yes, anchoring down the canopies and the tents is, is also on, um, is a requirement on our proposed, uh, uh, standard. So yes, any tents or canopies must be securely anchored down and obtain the appropriate permits from fire and or building. So that is something. And then, um, as I stated, yeah, Terry and I had that discussion, um, regarding, uh, whether we would require people to remove their, um, equipment at night. Um, we kind of went back and forth with it and we ended up that, um, you know, it would really be up to the operators, um, you know, cause if they have large equipment and things like that, they don't want to be hauling back and forth. I mean, in terms of the outdoor dining, we don't require during the summer when there's outdoor seasonal dining, we don't require people to, um, bring their tables and chairs inside. We do allow them to keep it out, uh, for the season. Um, so that's, we, we just basically, um, figured that we would leave it up to the applicant or the operator. And if it became a situation or a nuisance situation, that we would address it at that time. But we didn't want to impose any additional, um, you know, challenges or hardships, um, if it would be something that they would feel comfortable with leaving their equipment outside. Um, and then, uh, just one more thing that I wanted to bring up. I know you mentioned dog grooming, dog grooming. Um, that's not really, um, we're, we're looking at the, um, restaurants, um, barbers, hairstylists, and nail technicians. Those are the only businesses that would be eligible for applying for this, uh, temporary relief.
Okay. And then, um, do we have the staff to go around and, um, confirm whether these tents are properly secured down with the proper weights and everything? Or are we putting additional burden on, um, our staff?
Um, you know, I spoke to, uh, both Mark Pilot and Edgar Della and they were, um, very much in favor of this. Um, you know, all of their building inspectors are, um, back in the offices. They're doing regular, um, inspections. Um, I know Ed is, you know, driving around regularly as well. Um, and they do have, um, you know, they are used to doing these, um, kind of, um, you know, tent assessments and things like that as part of their, um, you know, businesses are applying for their sidewalk sales and things like that. So, um, they did not seem to think it would be, um, you know, much of an additional burden. And, um, um, we're just, you know, like I said, trying to, trying to assist and help some of these businesses and where we can, so, um.
Okay. And then, uh, wait, yeah, okay, thank you. And then I guess one last question. I've seen on some sites that some restaurants are creating like a, a, a bubble tent where they can put a table and a party of six or a party of eight can sit inside and like the waitresses will go in and out or serve the food through a window. Has anyone requested anything like that in Southfield?
Um, not to my knowledge, no. Um, I, I've not seen any request, um, for that. Um, you know, I don't know how that would work in terms of, you know, whatever table separation requirements might, might come down the pipe. But, um, you know, that would be something that, you know, we would, uh, we would be able to consider, um, as part of this.
Yeah, kind of like an igloo. I mean, I know that, you know, some of the restaurants do that in the winter and actually it's, it's kind of cool. And I just didn't know if anyone was considering something like that in Southfield. Okay. Thank you. I think you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm muted this time. Okay. Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, okay, yes, thank you. Uh, and again, I want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Haskins for bringing out a point to me that we probably should ask that our minutes from our meeting be sent to the rest of the council because we had a, a little bit more information and a lot of the questions that are being asked were covered in the legislative meeting. So I apologize to the rest of council for not asking for that to be sent to you. Um, but, um, most of the questions that I had were already answered, um, with the sanitation and the conditions, the parking and all of that. Um, I'm just wondering, since this is all brought about because of the COVID, are we also implementing our, uh, COVID, uh, following our COVID, uh, guidelines as far as, uh, having sanitary, uh, stations outside where people can wash their hands? Because it's not just protecting the business, it's also protecting the people and vice versa. So it's a double, um, protection. So I know we don't have hand washing and things like that. People still have access to the building for that kind of thing, but we have sanit- uh, sanitizer stations everywhere. Will we still have something like that for people that may just come in and, um, be waiting? Uh, and then along the lines of the cleanup, I know that, uh, we said that we would follow the guidelines from the fire, police, building, planning and all of that. But what about our drainage? Because now the, everything has to be going somewhere and the outside surfaces, we just want to make sure that they're able to, um, handle everything that's coming, that's gonna be coming that, their way due to this, um, COVID, um, situation.
Um, right. So we are, you know, we're primarily going to be relying on the Michigan, um, requirements in terms of these businesses reopening. I know they have pretty stringent, um, requirements, um, and, you know, for restaurants. And I'm sure it will be passed on to the salons as well. So we're kind of relying on the, um, you know, the state requirements in terms of the, you know, um, daily cleaning and, um, like I said, the, you know, masks, uh, you know, everything like that. So that's, that's kind of, we're right, relying on that for just the, the glen- the, the general cleanliness and sanitation portion. Um, but as for any, any sort of, um, maybe, um, impact on. Um, but as for any, any sort of, um, maybe, um, impact on utilities or infrastructure or things like that, that will be something that the building department will, um, also be looking at as part of their review. If, if they see something that might impact, um, you know, something, you know, if they've got a haircutting station that's near a catch basin, I mean, that'll be something that, that, uh, that they'll pick up on and they'll catch as part of that review. So that we really want to make sure, um, that we know where they're specifically locating and how we're going to be, they're going to be laying out these, uh, chairs and stations. Um, so for that very reason, um, so that we can, you know, minimize any sort of impact, um, in any regard.
Oh, right. That's, it, thank you. That's what I wanted to ensure. Anyone that's listening, that we are taking all of those precautions. And yes, it will be, at this point, a, a little bit more work on, um, our employees of the building department and other areas that we have, fire, police and that. But at the same time, the health of the city is worth it. So we don't want to try to avoid COVID and cause something else. So that's why I was asking. But thank you. Those are the only questions that I had.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Morris?
Thank you. Yeah, my question was similar to Councilwoman Taylor's. I was just curious to know if we were going to require, um, in particular, the, the barber, the, uh, hairstylist and the, um, nail technicians because, um, I know that, you know, they could use water and, uh, just from a safety perspective, if we were going to require that they provide PPE for their clients, like it's, if, if someone, does, does, do they have, do they have to have their own mask and, and gloves and hand sanitizer? Or will the business provide that for them when they come? Uh, if I'm seated in a chair and, you know, I'm getting my nails done, my hands are physically, you know, in that space, I, I may have coughed, are they wiping down the seat after every client? I just, I don't know if that information is in the document that you guys had at legislative, but I'm just wondering if you could share, share with us, you know, what you're doing.
Yep. Um, you know, we had discussions about that and we, we honestly were concerned with, um, requiring something that may not be in line with what the state was requiring or, um, you know, maybe too stringent or maybe not stringent enough. So we were really relying on whatever is going to be required at the state level and then also by the health department, um, the Oakland County Health Department, they, as part of our, um, you know, proposed conditions, they will be required to comply with all state requirements and all county Department of Health regulations. So again, we, in, to minimize any sort of conflicts and in, in getting down to the nitty gritty and the specifics between what we're proposing and what, um, will be, uh, required at the state and county levels, we're, we're relying on them to provide those, um, specifics. And, um, we would just, uh, ensure that, um, as part of our application process, we were going to have the applicant sign something stating that they know that they will be, uh, required to be in line with whatever those state and county regulations will be.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, we can re- re- rely on the state and county, uh, regulations, but as a city, we could also, if we so chose to, uh, implement our own, correct?
Absolutely, yes. If they, absolutely. If that was something that the, the council would like to, um, you know, add in or make sure that we have something very specific in term, you know, with pertaining to that, um, the PPE and things like that, that's, absolutely could add that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, you know, I'm not, I don't know that we have to mandate that the businesses provide a mask or gloves, but I would at least concur with Councilwoman Taylor. I think that, uh, hand sanitizers or, or, uh, dispensing, uh, standing hand sanitizer, um, of equipment should be standard, uh, for outdoor services as well as, I think that we should require that they wipe down, uh, the chair or, you know, whatever, uh, person is sitting in to receive services, it needs to be sanitized after every, after every customer. I, I would, I would, I would recommend that we, uh, state that in our procedures.
Could absolutely add that, for sure.
Okay. Um, this quite, I'm, I'm still kind of thinking through this, and I'm totally in favor of it and I've heard, you know, we talked about it at legislative, but I did, I had a thought. I'm curious as to, with the grooming stations, um, where, where do they get their, uh, source of energy from? I mean, where do they plug into their, uh, tools that they need to do to either cut hair or do hair? Uh, where would that come from if they were in a parking lot, for instance, or something of that nature?
Um, they may have to, um, you know, obtain an electrical permit from the building department. Um, you know, maybe a, a matter of just providing an additional, um, you know, junction box or something, but they would have to obtain any sort of, um, pertinent electrical permits from the building department. So, um, that, you know, that's, um, very similar to, um, you know, how the building department, um, and how the city actually, um, how we react to temporary approvals in general. The VBA typically handles, um, you know, temporary approvals for, you know, um, events and carnivals and things like that and, um, kind of the same regard, um, the applicants would have to, you know, obtain any sort of necessary, necessary permits for any sort of generators or, you know, anything to, um, to power their, uh, their electrical, um, you know, equipment. So they, they would still have to comply with, with all of those requirements in addition to the general, yeah.
So the city wouldn't incur those costs then, right?
No, it would be a separate, um, you know, the thing that we're asking for the reduction and, you know, um, and cost would be just basically the planning department approval for the locations and then the building permitting, um, fee for the permits, but, or for the tent permits. But, yeah, any sort of trade permits or anything that would be required, um, they would still, you know, have to apply for those. But not everybody might need it, you know? We, we don't, we just don't know at this point.
Okay. And that just kind of leads me to just the last thing was, um, is this extended sip only to Southfield businesses or, because you mentioned for instance, like a carnival or I would think a food truck thing in the parking lot? Can anybody come in with the business and do this?
No, that's not our intent. Um, so our intent is to allow for, um, an estab- an established business that's already in place, um, that has a, that already possesses a valid certificate of occupancy from the building department, um, to, to allow them to expand. So basically, we have in those regulations, it must be, um, you know, this must be operational in conjunction with an interior business of the same function and on the same property. So, um, no, I'm sorry, I was, um, just trying to, um, kind of give an example of maybe some of the other, um, instances where the city would review, you know, a temporary approval. But this, in this particular instance, no, we're looking at just permitting an existing business to expand some other operations outdoor.
Good. So I think that, yeah, I think that's a, that's a good thing, so, okay, very good. That's all I had. Anyone else on the call have any questions or comments on this?
Uh, Ms. Chair, this is Dan Brightwell.
Yes, Mr. Brightwell.
Yeah, I, I had one, one additional question that I failed to ask, ask. On, on the last page, it says permission shall, shall expire to specific provisions. Is, does that come into that April two through, uh, October addition to this particular document, the resolution? Uh, we will put something in there that, that said this will expire at the end of October?
There's a chair, this is Dawn. Um, yes, Councilwoman Brightwell, uh, we're talking, I'm mentioning it right now, I would change it to show that it'll expire in October and that, um, it couldn't be extended except, you know, as it related to COVID nineteen and through the same procedures, uh, CRG and stuff. So yes, I would change that.
Okay, okay, good. And, um, Sarah, um, I know you did, you did some extensive work a couple of years ago, uh, with drones and I, you know, I was getting out our reg- regulation for drones. You had did some extensive work on that. Would this be a area where I would like to see, once this is up and running, a periodic report back to council about where drones, how this looks? I mean, I would like to see if, if that's something that planning can work with whoever is controlling the drones, cable fifteen or the police department, whatever. I would like to see an overview of this deployment within this city and how it looks, you know, from a, um, area standpoint. That's, that's just something, that's just something down the road that, that will give us a cleanup view, but I don't want to stop this, but this is definitely progressive and is forward thinking, but I just, from a reporting back standpoint, I would like to see an overview, overhead view of how this looks.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's, I think we should bring that, yeah, we can bring that back later, Dan, you're right. Um, we can take a look at that and talk about that a little bit more. I don't know, I, I got some concerns about that just right off the bat, but, um, can we talk about that and, you know, in a later date?
Sure, sure, sure. No, it's not, it's not, I don't want to slay this, not this, it was just, I know Sarah was kind of, uh, into, well, she, she was familiar with drones, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Um, Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, this is Councilwoman Taylor. I just wanted to mention one other thing that came up at legislation, at our legislative meeting. We were asking too to ask the city if they could look into see, because this is, uh, due to the COVID nineteen, um, uh, pandemic that we're going through, all of this, if there's any way that we might be able to use some of the monies that the government, either county, state or federal, has set aside to collect the, the monies for the fees that we've reduced, like that two hundred or five hundred dollars, maybe there's a way for us to do that? So, uh, the city is also looking at that. And then we can also tell the businesses, maybe there's a way for them to recoup whatever expenses they've incurred as well, you know, under some of these, um, COVID nineteen things that, uh, that are all out here that the government is putting out. So there may be a way to save some monies in that way too. Mm, that was it.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else on the line that wishes to speak, uh, on this matter before we move forward? Uh, it was already stated by the clerk that we don't miss, need a rule ten as this is a special meeting, but I do, I feel like we would, uh, given the circumstances, something we'd like to act on, um, pretty soon. Um, so if there is a feeling of, uh, moving forward and taking a vote on this this evening, I'd like to entertain that motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. That, well, go ahead.
Brightwell.
Yeah, oh, I was, I just want to make a motion that we go forward with the, um, uh, regarding the temporary approval of outdoor dining services and grooming service stations.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the resolution to, uh, for temporary approval of outdoor dining spaces and grooming stations, uh, as discussed this evening with any appropriate change, changes and suggestions made by council. Uh, are there any other questions or concerns? Adam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madalval? Yes. Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Resolution adopted for the temporary approval for outdoor dining spaces and personal service stations as response to the COVID pandemic phase reopening with the, um, additions that the city attorney made.
All right, thank you. And we'll just ask that, um, maybe in, in the next month or so, we get a, a report back on how things are working out so far, just so we can be abreast of those, that some of the concerns that some folks did have. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Um, item two for discussion, uh, this evening is the city of Southfield resumption of in-person operations plan.
Yes, Mr. President, this is Administrator Zorn. Uh, only, uh, a week ago, we were anticipating a return to work date for our staff of this Friday, uh, with the exception of the library and Parks and Rec and the Courts Department with the reopening of June first. With the governor's most recent, uh, extension of her executive orders, uh, to stay home, stay safe, um, that has now been pushed back to a return date for all of our employees, again with the exception of the, uh, library, court and Parks and Rec for Friday, June, June twelfth, with City Hall to reopen on Monday, June fifteenth. Um, I believe earlier today, a seventy-plus page, uh, document was transmitted to council members. Uh, it is still a, uh, it's a draft nearing final, uh, that details how various departments, uh, will come and return to work. I also, uh, have asked Deputy Chief, Deputy City Administrator John McReena to present a PowerPoint this evening. Um, and we highlight and show, uh, some of the many things that have been done throughout City Hall to ensure, uh, the general public safety as well as the safety of our employees. Um, it, this has been an incredibly challenging time for all of us, and I really want to stress that the city of Southfield has been open for business, uh, the entire time. It is just you've had to do business very differently. Police and fire have been responding to in some points very record, uh, public safety calls. Public Works has still been taking care of our water and sewer and maintaining our streets, filling potholes and keeping this, uh, grass cutting. Uh, Parks and Rec has been maintaining their parks while their, uh, facilities such as the Beechwood Center and our pavilion and our rec center here on our, uh, Fakasi Municipal Campus have been, uh, closed. The library has been, uh, closed. Uh, we have been, uh, still processing business. The building department has been issuing, uh, permits. Uh, planning has been doing planning, engineering. The, uh, clerk's office is processing and, uh, and preparing for an election, issuing death certificates. The assessing office finished up, uh, March border review and the treasurer's office closed out the, uh, winter tax season. You know, we are still working, it is just very, very different. And if you could, uh, allow us to present this PowerPoint, uh, to council, we'll, uh, hopefully answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Zorn. I'd first like to thank Clerk Hawkins doubly because, one, she allowed this presentation to be delayed, the submission is late as practical because we were anticipating possible changes of dates. And two, no later, no sooner did we submit this than the dates were changed and she allowed it updated. So that's why your PDF is wrong, but your presentation is right. If we can go to the first slide? I think Mr. Zorn talked about a great point. This is not a reopening, it is a return to in-person service. And for some departments, it's not even that because they've always had return to service or in-person service throughout this entire ordeal. I'd first like to show some pictures of what's happening. That's the clerk's office to the right. You note there's two service stations, proper social spacing. We're using electronic microphones to maximize the separation. The airflow is also from the employee side to the customer side. And if things change easily, those microphones can be removed, we can put in a screen, we can even just leave a glass hole. So there's a little bit of flexibility. I think what's more important on this slide is the picture to the left where you don't see any changes, but you will eventually, you will see two windows put in place for election service. If any of you were here before the primary, it was crazy, the lobby was just jammed with people wanting to re- up or ballot, you know, replace their ballot because the person they voted for dropped out. Well, now we can handle that safely because those windows will be separated and we can have people lined all the way across the pavilion. So I think that's a really exciting change. If we move on, the policy that we concocted is actually customized for departments, so it's consistent, citywide goals, parameters and guidelines and some specific hard points that need to be complied with. But it does allow departments to customize it. Here's one of the changes that we're also making. The receptionist desk will be going away. The receptionist will be working behind the glass in the neighborhood information center. We can go on. And the department's customization is kind of like the customer service bear, or the customer employee barriers. We have Beechwoods, we have Evergreen Hills, we have the second floor security station at the court. They all perform the same function, but they're all a little bit different. So all departments had to comply and address the same issues, but we allowed them to customize their approach, just like these barriers are customized, because every department does things so differently and is situated differently. Okay, if we could move on. First about the when, this is what was messed up by the change, obviously. A lot of departments never stopped. Um, police, fire, DPW without counter service, still full service. The court, we don't have a timeframe for that because that is sup- The court, we don't have a timeframe for that, because that is suppo- controlled by the Supreme Court, and there's some set points as far as, um, treatment options and numbers that have to be considered before they can reopen. So that is different from us. Recreation has been, in some ways, operating all the time, but right now, there's no timeline for resumption of what we typically think of when it comes to recreation programs. Facility maintenance has started coming full-time on the fifteenth, and they're focusing on a deep clean. People come back. They're gonna be nervous. They're gonna be anxious. They're not gonna wanna see dust, even though if an area sat untouched for so long that there's dust, there's no COVID living there. It doesn't matter. We need to do a deep clean so people even feel better. Building, engineering, and code, a lot of their functions never stopped, but they're actually doing counter service now. And for everyone else, we're looking at June twelfth for employees to do the final checks to get their departments ready and managers, and June fifteenth to open. Of course, that's still depending on situations, what the, uh, governor says, and what is the situation here in the city. So, how are we gonna do this? Let's talk about the next slide. There's two primary ways this disease is transmitted. Now, of course, our knowledge is, is fluid. We're, we're learning as we go along, not just us. I mean, the experts are learning as we're going along. But one of the main ways is airborne, and there's a lot of different ways we've addressed it. I mean, some of it was very simple. We replaced some of our cubicles with higher barriers. We had them in stock. At one time, people wanted to be able to talk over them. Now they wanna be able to not have the particles drift over the top. So we, we increased them, put them back in service. Rearranged some things so people are farther apart. The customer-employee barriers also. All of our restrooms, except for the very large ones for the pavilion, are now single occupancy, and they have signs, knock before you enter. So that'll keep our distancing. There was just no way to do that. We're putting out markers for customers to remain separate. We don't allow them to crowd in one area where, where we're open, and we're not going to. Obviously, we know that we're using phone and video conferencing as we're doing that now. Some of our small conference rooms are just going away. They're not going to be conference rooms. They will be maybe a single-use room. One person can sit in, because there's just not enough adequate space. Facility maintenance right now is collecting chairs from a lot of the other conference rooms and offices to discourage people being too close. It's gonna be about sixty percent. This is totally going to change how we work. We're staggering shifts, so that if you have a shift of ten people, they all don't necessarily start the ti- same time. They stagger in a little bit. That way, we have less exposure. Same thing with lunches and breaks. Everyone doesn't go to the break room where they used to anymore. Now they're going away to different areas. Reusable masks are coming for the whole city, at least two per person. One of the challenges that some departments had is how do you train someone to do a job if you can't be with them? You can't be close proximity to them all the time. So we're changing some of that in some of the departments. One of the changes we made in shifts was the facility maintenance afternoon staff. They used to be here to interact with the employees regarding special things that are wanted. No, now they come in after everyone's gone. Our HVAC was modified to increase the fresh air. That's kind of a fine line, because if you do that too much, you, you, you lose all your air conditioning. But at least we can do it to the point where it's still comfortable, but as much fresh air as possible. Testing, great opportunity. We're doing that. We're also requiring that for contractors and visitors. The mayor texted me today about the company that's putting in new wallpaper in our lobby, and I texted back, make sure they know that they need to be screened. They'll need to have their temperature checked. They'll need to have a mask, or they can't come in. So, we're not requiring employee testing of customers in the customer areas, but we have instructions at all our doors, and how they should check, and they should not come in if they're not healthy. But when it comes to the employee areas, no one is going to be able to come in without the health screening, without the temperature check, without the mask. The pavilion walkers, there's, we're just probably not going to be able to do that for right now. One of the interesting changes is that some of you already know that at one time, it was intended that code enforcement be, would be working a counter off the rear of the public service building, accessible through the pavilion. That never really happened, but now it is going to happen, and the reason is because with all those departments at the front counter, it was just going to be too crowded on the employee side and too crowded on the customer side, because when people come in for code enforcement, they often wanna talk a while, and that would make it difficult for us to have the other customers come and go. So as it is now, code enforcement will use the back counter, and that will help us move things along and keep people separate. We're working from home if appropriate. We're being careful to limit foot traffic, and we'll show that in the next slide. But one of the things to do is to keep that social distancing. Part of the way you do that is by directing the way people walk through our buildings, so that there's less in-person contact. First of all, in the upper left, we have one of the doors, signs on our restrooms. Second is a conference room. That was no longer a conference room. Now it's just a one-person room. We see to the right some of the directional arrows for our employee areas. Uh, sometimes I think they can get a little confusing, but they work well for the people who work in the departments all the time. Our self-screening sign, there's an example of that, that was put together by Community Relations, and they will be updating it. Of course, in the lower left, we have a no-touch thermometer that we're using. Pretty simple. We've got our increased height on our barriers, our, our divider walls. And something else we're doing is in-and-out doors. So in this instance, the doors on one side would be in, the doors on the other side would be out. And the whole idea there is just to prevent that face-to-face contact. On the lower right-hand corner, we have some stand here stickers. They are, we have them for inside, we have them for outside. They are both to remind customers not to become too close to each other, and to actually tell them, hey, stand here. I think we're all gonna be a lot more sensitive to that and sensitive to tape as time goes on. All right. Next. Okay, the other way we're catching COVID is touch, and there are just a lot of things we're doing for that. Obviously, the, no latex gloves, because some people do have problems. We're trying to do with paper as much as we can. The electrostatic decon- disinfectants that you authorized us to purchase, great thing. You, you, two weeks after we purchased those, you could not get one to save your life, but because of your quick action, we were able to buy those right away. One of the big changes is that disinfecting is everyone's job now. It used to be just, you know, I come in, I work in my office, and facility maintenance comes and cleans up. That's not the way it is anymore. Everyone cleans. Everyone takes a stop at least twice a day in the public, the common employee areas, and once a day in the private areas. Same thing with vehicles. Every department has a plan for how their vehicles are cleaned, depending on if it's a single use or if they do have to share. Mail's getting disinfectant. Again, working from home. We're looking at more motion switches. You know, we originally put those in just to save energy, and there were some instances where that didn't make sense. Well, now it does make sense, because we don't want people touching those switches. Same thing with the foot poles up above. I don't know if you've noticed it, if you've been in City Hall, but there are some doors now you don't have to touch to pull open. There's a device at the bottom, I'll show it to you in the next slide, that you don't have to touch it with your hand at all. Use your foot. Again, PPE and sanitizing training for all new employees. Golf cart use suspended, and, and this will be upsetting to some people, no fruit in administration, because we can't invite people to come in on a social basis anymore. We have to keep things to work. Okay, let's see some examples of that next. All right, there's our, uh, much bond and Clorox Disinfectant three sixty machines. Our most popular product is the, the Centiva. Everyone seems to love that. And one of the things we're doing a lot is training, especially with our facility maintenance. You know, at one time, it was, well, I'm a janitor, and I wipe, and I clean, and I empty garbage cans. It's not like that anymore. You're our first line of defense against COVID. So we have been doing a lot of training, and it's things as basic as wiping in one direction, letting the product stay on the surface long enough to thoroughly disinfect. Out of plan, one of the things we're planning is how to reopen our buildings. Although we've been consistently inspecting buildings, a lot of these buildings have been closed, and there could be problems that come up. In the workplace, the disinfectant wipes will not just be for facility maintenance, they'll be for everyone to use. On the left, I have one of the door poles. That's the loading dock doors. As you can see, once you use your electronic fob to unlock that door, you use the door pole at the bottom. That way, you never touch the door. Sanitizing is great, but as soon as you walk away, someone touches it. If we can end up eliminating touch points, those are great. So that's one thing we're doing with doors. The other thing we're doing with doors is we're propping them open. If there's really not a need for privacy, safety, or security, we're just gonna prop them open. There's the interior doors to the City Hall. They are propped. We're even gonna take a step further, and we have, that's the employee break room in the lower level. The door's gone. There was really no need for that door, and it's gone. Again, hand sanitizing for everyone. And finally, vehicles, there's equipment in all the vehicles to help them sanitize. So those are some of the ways that we are trying to make this as safe as practical for our employees and our guests, while still serving our residents and our internal customers to the best of our ability. At the next slide, I'd like to talk about the impact on our departments. First of all, sadly, we have had two current employees pass away from COVID nineteen, as everyone is aware. Um, but the impact on departments varies tremendously. Most, I would say, most departments are changing how they do, but not so much what they do. We're doing things electronically. We're doing things by mail. We're taking credit cards. We're not taking money. Little things, but the functions are still going forward. Many depart, or some departments, though, are just, their, their activities are wiped out. I used an example of Parks and Rec, and I wanna give a disclaimer. This is in no way a full and complete discussion of Parks and Rec. Terry and her crew are doing a wonderful job, Terry feels, and I just saw them as one of the departments that's really impacted. And as you can see, most, everything goes away. I mean, I can go through them all, but it's pretty much, you can think of the few activities that are still going to be in place, because Parks and Rec is a in-person activity. So they are impacted the absolute most. Next slide, I'd like to talk about some things going forward. First of all, I do think you need some in, in-depth presentations from these departments that are really being impacted. Parks and Rec, library, court, maybe, because they are the ones that are having to make the hard decisions and make the changes. So I would suggest that we include that. Obviously, this presentation did not touch on the financial aspect of the quarantine or the state budget, what's that supposed to do with revenue sharing, or on property values. So, there is another area that I really do think you'll wanna in-depth presentation, and there are some good things from this. First of all, I don't think there's a department in our city that has not improved its general operation as a result of this. I'm not talking about our preparations for emergency or for COVID. I'm just talking about how we do our job. Because, you know, when you're on a treadmill, a lot of times, you don't stop to see the direction you're going. You just keep going. Well, for some of us, we had a chance to step back from the treadmill. We started assessing things, and I've heard lots and seen lots of good ideas implemented that are making changes that will improve us no matter what. Another thing that's great is that we're better prepared for other emergencies. One of the first preparations that we, we were prepared was a COOP, a Continued Operations Plan. That is an all-hazard plan. So if we have a tornado, if we have flood, if we have fire, we will be better prepared as a result of preparing for this. And just on a personal note, something I've noticed for myself and for everyone else, is we've really had an opportunity to get to know ourselves better in a different manner and get to know our coworkers in a very different way, and, and seeing us working under stress, and seeing us dealing with it and coming together. Finally, on a really personal note, I, I'm not taking anything away from the Greatest Generation. This is just a representative, representation of the quotes that, that are out there regarding the Greatest Generation. But one thing I'd like to point out, if you don't have the greatest challenge, I don't think you can ever be the Greatest Generation. And now, it's not just a generation that's facing this. It is our whole country. It's not just the young people who are going off to war. It is the whole country, because the war has come to us, in a sense. So, I think this is an opportunity for us all as generations to be the new Greatest Generation. Okay, if I could, I just wanna say thank you. First, I wanna point out, this area is the Building Department. When Commercial Glass came in, they said, oh, we cannot design this. You need an architect. I know many of you know, as soon as you bring an architect, you're gonna spend way more than you want to. It's gonna take way longer than you think it's gonna take. Instead, I talked to our building officials. I said, you guys have the expertise. Can you do this? They designed this. This was totally designed by our building officials. And when Commercial Glass looked at the plans and put the implementation, they said this was the best-designed barrier they've ever put in. One thing I'd just like to point out about these barriers, they do not look like party stores or gas stations. This is not bulletproof glass. It's simply tempered glass. It's clear. It's just here to maintain a, a safe barrier. It's not a, it's not like the green flashing lights that look horrible. Finally, I would like to thank you for allowing me to pre- make this presentation, but more importantly, I wanna thank, pass on the thanks that I've heard from several employees. I know we all talk about the people who are out there doing stuff, and not just police and fire, that the facility maintenance, they're coming and cleaning, and everyone's still going, but we need to thank you, because you've been behind us. These customer barriers, when we went to Commercial Glass to have these installed, they were all laid off. No one else was asking about this. We were first in line, and when we went to them, we said, look, we'll do this, but you're gonna finish us before you do other people. Okay? Because everyone's gonna want this sort of thing, and we're first. That was because you were behind us. Those Clorox three sixty machines that we bought before anyone else realized they needed them, that was because you were behind us. And I just wanna thank you, and pass on the thanks from the other employees, because that is something I've heard, that we understand that council, our residents, our businesses are behind us, especially our elected officials. And this is hard on everyone. I certainly understand that. So thank you. And of course, if you have questions, I do wanna point out, this is a dynamic presentation. This is going to change. I guarantee that before we open, there will be changes, there will be improvements, there will be tweaks. This is very much a team effort. I just had someone email me and say, hey, there's a, a paper towel dispenser here that people have to touch. Whoa, thank you. It was gone the next day. And a touchless one was installed. We had it in stock. So, we are responding to everyone. No one person has enough ideas to fix this problem or to get us through it, but together, I think we all do. All right, sir. Thank you. I'll stop talking.
All right, John. Thank you. Well said, and well put. Wonderful presentation. Um, is this, we, we're operating as this is, uh, just a discussion item for tonight, correct?
Yes, sir. This is informational. I, yes, sir. Just so you know.
Who?
Yeah.
Mr. President, we're getting a lot of feedback. Can we ask for people to mute their phones? The cable's getting a lot of feedback on the line.
Okay. Please, uh, for all that are on the line, please make sure you mute, mute it unless you're speaking.
But you are correct, Council President. We are not asking any action. This is simply a discussion point. Although I believe at the next council meeting, I may be coming back for additional fund. In fact, I know I'll be coming back for additional funding. When we funded the barriers, they all weren't designed. They all weren't in place. We've since come up with designs for the court that work well for the judges and keep the employees safe, as you saw some of them, and for the library. The library was a lot of barrier work, because, again, that's how they work with people.
Okay, great. Well, we'll be, we'll begin the discussion with, uh, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, thank you. I just had a quick question, uh, for our, a city administrator. Did I hear that you, you said that there was a seventy-plus-page document that we got earlier today?
Uh, yes. Uh, it, it was, I, I'm, we asked the Clerk Hawkins to transmit it, uh, about three thirty, four o'clock today. Uh, if it hasn't happened, we will get that out. I-
Okay. I, I know, I, I was looking through. I didn't see it, I see it in my inbox, but, um, if it's gonna get to us at some point, um, I look forward to seeing it. Um, this is a, a great presentation, and, uh, and one of the things I was definitely concerned about was how the glass was gonna look, and it doesn't look like, uh, a party store, bulletproof glass, anything like that. It does still look welcoming. Um, I think, thank you guys so much for all the work you put into making, uh, uh, our campuses as safe as possible for our residents and our visitors that come to City Hall. I really appreciate it. Uh, you guys did a great job.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Excuse me, I was on mute. Um, John, excellent presentation, very informative, and obviously, um, go- going through this, um, uh, COVID situation gives us the opportunity to, to do things differently, so, and improve everything. Uh, but my only question is, this is probably for, perhaps, uh, as I understand it, we've spent approximately two hundred thousand or plus doing these modifications. Uh, what is the probability of getting some of this reimbursed by FEMA or the state or federal, federal government?
Um, extremely high, and I, I, I would almost say practically absolute. This is, these are eligible expenses. Uh, obviously, I'm still waiting to see the fine print. Uh, FEMA is covering three-quarters of our, uh, employee cost and, and overtime cost. Uh, we know from the, uh, Oakland County, there was an announcement last week that, uh, thirty-two million was being divided up uh, amongst the, uh, county, uh- Based on just our population, our raw number would be one-point-seven million. They're supposed to recognize severity of the impact, so it'll probably be a higher number. And then there are different funding mechanisms being put in place by different federal agencies. I feel pretty reasonable, very confident that the facility modifications necessary to protect the public will be a reimbursable expense.
That sounds good, sounds good. Thanks for it, appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, Mr. Banks?
Thank you, um, yes, excellent presentation, and I also am looking forward to reading the document, Mr. Zorn, that you are sending out. Um, have we had any problems, um, purchasing any of the Clorox items? Like the sprays or the sanitizers?
If I could, Council President?
Yes.
We, we literally bought pallets before this started, and we are starting to get low. We really didn't anticipate months and months and months of this. And yes, we have many orders pending, and all of a sudden, we'll get gloves. And then the next day, maybe we'll get some wipes, but sprays, not wipes, Clorox wipes are like gold. When they come in the store, they're gone in fifteen minutes, while we have just as hard a time getting them. One of the things we did was we did share with our suppliers that we are supplying our first responders as far as cleaning some of their buildings and so forth. And we actually have provided some of the supplies to our first responders as well, so that's worked out. And I hope that moved us up a notch a little bit, but yes, getting everything is difficult.
And if I may, Mr. President, we had, we, for, geez, over six weeks, we've had a critical supply inventory list, and we started with our Emergency Operations Center. Those items that we were able to get from primarily Oakland County via the state of Michigan and FEMA. But our purchasing department, Nikki Lumpkin, and our central services, under the direction of Renee Hennahosa, are responsible for coordinating those supplies. Uh, we have the police and fire and public works and facilities handling their own supplies. All other employee groups are going through our central services. But we're keeping very tight reins on the, just availability from the supply chain. Clearly, we are concerned as more and more people come back to work and move from the stay-at-home mode to back in the workplace. We're concerned about our ability to get the personal protection equipment.
Thank you, and that was my concern, that we really need to have a lot of pallets available and probably under lock and key, so they don't disappear.
Yep.
And then, going to, I believe it's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think it's the eighth slide, where you've got the Clorox Sensivab disinfectant. Lucky it, there's a Clorox machine. Is that like one of the, um, they call them like a gun bomb disinfectant? Is that like that? I guess there's a machine out there where you can, like, go into a room, spray it, the whole room becomes foggy, but then it's going to be disinfected. Is that what this is, or no? And then if it's not, have we considered investing in something like that?
Through the Council President, if I could? Those two machines are two of the three Clorox disinfectant machines, and they are the electrostatic machines. So basically, you're not just spraying liquid around. What you're doing is spraying an electrostatically charged liquid that is drawn to all surfaces by electrostatic charge, like a magnet, so it coats everything. It doesn't just coat the top of the chair arm, it coats the bottom. It doesn't just coat the top of the doorknob, it coats the bottom too. So that is exactly what you were thinking. Those are larger machines, they are plugged in, and we use them in larger areas. We also have a different brand battery-powered machines. One's on loan to the PD, one's on loan to the fire department, I think we have three others left. And we use those in areas that are smaller, because the charges only last for about four hours. So yes, that's exactly what those are, and they're very popular. We get requests to spray areas. Department heads say, "Hey, we just had someone who is going home because they just realized they had an exposure at home." No problem, tonight, we will spray the entire room. When we do that, we post warning signs, letting people know that, you know, we try to cover things, but if you had a coffee cup up, you're going to want to wash that. If you had food outside, you're probably going to want to toss that. And we did send out warnings beforehand to let people know. Because like I said, this coats everything, and I'm pretty sure it wouldn't taste good in your coffee.
Okay, all right, thank you, you answered my questions, good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, I concur with everyone, this is a great presentation. Thank you so much for presenting it to us, it's very timely, and the information is very much received, and I appreciate it. Um, I agree with all the questions, I think, that already have been asked. I just had one question, and I don't know if Mr. Meadows is on the phone or not, so. Uh, my question is, with your return to work, what, if anything, that you have in place for employees that doesn't feel safe? Like, they'll say, even though you've got all these things in place, I don't feel safe coming back to work. Um, do we have a process whereby they can go to HR and fill out a form, or what have you? Is something like that in place already?
I know that Mr. Meadows is working through that issue on certain areas. And I think it would be best if maybe another presentation just on that, because I think that's an excellent question. But I can't speak in depth about that, because I would not want to say anything in error.
Oh, no, and I appreciate that, that's why I said Mr. Meadows. Maybe that's something, again, we should ask. I just want our directors and managers to have something in their hands when, before we start bringing employees back to work. Just so they'll know in case something happens, or if they have an employee that's stating that. So that was just a question for Mr. Meadows.
Mr. President, I, Mr. Meadows may not be on the phone with us, but I know we are already dealing with some, several of those cases, and we're, certain cases, working our way through ADA-type issues and other reasonable accommodations. You know, there's a certain reality to this situation that's very difficult for all of us, is that we do have a job to do, and, you know, we're going to have to come back at a certain time. And Mr. Meadows and I, I think last week, we had three conversations about this. And this will be one of our biggest challenges. You know, I think those of us who are familiar with workers' comp cases, there's always a percentage of employees who never return. Well, this is not a workers' comp situation, it may have some of the, some similar characteristics. There will be a percentage of employees who elect not to return, and as employer, we will have to address that.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was something in place, there are employees with underlying conditions that may not feel safe. And I was just wondering if there was something that we've already have in place to deal with that? And to help our managers out, because they'll be the first ones to, where employees, they'll be expecting them to come into the office, and they'll say, "No, I'm not coming because of this, this, or this." Just a question.
It's an excellent question.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the only other thing, I, because I'm in human resources, I'm dealing with this all the time. I know, and I give thanks, and I appreciate everything that you said, John. And I also think that we don't say thank you enough to all of the employees that's constantly working through all of this. Too many for me to even mention, but I do want them to know that we hear, we see them, and we appreciate them. But I was wondering, because where I'm at in HR, we also have, like, this COVID-19 has forced us to start doing things differently. And we utilize, we don't have our own cable, but we use a lot of the conference and teleconference Zooms and WebExes and all those kinds of things. But because we were dealing with the budget last month, I was just wondering, are we looking at streaming through cable? Maybe having them have their own, I think there's some kind of mechanism, and maybe Renee Hennahosa might be able to tell you, or Lisa. There's some kind of equipment that you can purchase where we don't have to go through, like a Comcast or an Xfinity or something like that. We could have it stream live from our own cable area? I don't know if you've heard of something like that, but maybe, maybe that's just something to take away and talk with Lisa and Renee about. And maybe, John, you probably know better than I, but there's, because of this, it's forcing companies to do things differently. And that was one of the things that I had thought about.
We, uh, Mr. President, we are, you know, a number of us are using Skype, Zoom, Microsoft Team, the mechanism. But we're certainly open to finding new ways to get the streaming services through. And I think our interface with cable has been creative, but, you know, somewhat challenging, the mechanics of it. But we're certainly open to finding out better, you know, finding new ways as well. And I will tell you, I probably get twenty, thirty solicitations a day from different sales products. And some of them, a number of them have pertain to new streaming technologies. And they, um, I, there are a couple, I'll take a closer look, and forward to both Renee and cable as well as purchasing.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, the information that has been provided via cable and Michael Mannion, I think it's just been, it's been priceless over this pandemic. I, I've really appreciated all the hard work that they've done, so I just was wondering, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Morse?
Another great presentation, John, no, I have no further comments or questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Morse, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Um, John, that was really good information. And on the last slide, until you pointed out that that was the building department, I was thinking, I'm like, I'm not sure is that the building department, because it just looks completely different, but it looks very nice. Um, so great job to those employees who put that together.
Thank you.
A couple, a couple of questions. One of the pictures you had, a thermometer for forehead, temperature-taking, is that for people that come into City Hall, or is that just employees?
The policy that we're looking at right now, it's not just for employees, it would be for anyone who wants to enter into the employee-only area. So for instance, contractors, vendors, anyone of that nature. With customers, it's not mandatory, we have signs instructing customers how to self-test themselves, and departments are given leeway regarding what they can require. I think that's still under review as far as mask requirements or not.
Okay, and that was another question, are we requiring every resident that comes into City Hall to wear a mask?
That is, at present, that is in the purview of the departments. But I do believe, talking with Mr. Zorn, there's going to be a citywide policy on that, it's just, it's not come to fruition yet. I think we do need to see how masks are available. They're not quite as available as we'd like them to be, but I think that, you know, we do have some time on that.
And, Mr. President, we're probably taking our cue from Oakland County and their public health recommendations. Um, the, clearly for the mask, a number of places are moving that anyone who enters a building will go through in public areas, the temperature check. I don't think we're going to lean on that, but if you enter an employee area, you will. Um, and part of it is, we're trying to, again, you know, remember the airborne and to avoid touch. Um, we have been fortunate that we've been able to get a good supply of the thermometers, we still need more. I'd really love to put one in each department, and we're working on trying to procure those.
Okay, so that was another question, like, are we going to be providing masks if residents come and they don't have any or anything like that? Um, but I guess we'll have to work that out as well. Um, the last question I had was by the information desk. I know there was talk about signage, telling people that if you need, you know, specific information desk, you go there, or possibly moving their brochures and the-
Yes, sir.
-Southfield swag stuff outside, is that, is that still happening?
Those are excellent points, up through the chair, sir. Um, yes, unfortunately, the brochure display is too tall to work in the lobby area because of the metal beams that run along the top, near the top of the wall. So we'll have to go with the different products, that the idea is to get that moved out. Michael Mannion's department is working on verbiage for signage to direct people, because obviously, we won't just be able to put the sign on the receptionist desk anymore directing people. So we will need something kind of in the customer's face, or they will walk right by that reception area without seeing it. Also, the swag, I believe that's going to be on display, but still behind the glass wall. I think that's the idea, because otherwise, every time somebody wanted to buy something, then we'd be coming out, we'd be, so that would sort of defeat the purpose. It'll be visible, obviously, it's a glass wall, but it'll, it'll probably be behind it.
Okay, I have no further questions, this is great work, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council. Anyone else on the call that had any other comments or questions? Again, I think John did a wonderful job, he's been doing a wonderful job at making these things happen, so we appreciate you, Deputy Administrator, and everyone who's worked with you to make this happen. So thank you for the update and for the discussion we had this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, indeed. So we will, that's it, we'll move on to our communications portion of the meeting. And then, so we'll allow just a moment for any residents or individuals who would like to call in as part of communications. Just understand there is a bit of a delay with this, so we have to wait about a minute or so to see if we have people calling in.
Where are we at, Mr. President?
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening before we adjourn?
Uh, Mr. President, I just want to add, there was a couple items that were mentioned in the meeting that Council should have had, I did forward those items during the meeting. A couple of those items, I did not know they were to be forwarded to Council, but during the duration of those meetings, you do have both of those items for review.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Hawkins, we appreciate it.
Mr. President, this is Councilwoman Taylor. I have a question for, I don't know who, probably Fred or the mayor, if they're still on the line. I was, uh, there was a meeting today of the Southfield Growth Corporation, and it was at eleven-thirty by teleconference. When I tried to call in, I think I was a busy signal, so I could not hear the meeting at all. So my question is, is there, was that meeting taped, or is there a way for me to get that information? I really wanted to hear that, because I, first of all, I didn't even know we had a Southfield Growth Corporation. I think I heard the, now that, I think I heard the mayor mention it once, it had something to do with, I think, the NRI or something. But, um, the line, the number that was on the website was seven-nine-six-five-oh-five-two for public comment, and that number was busy, so I could not get anything. Or unless it was a different number that I should have been calling, and if it was, it wasn't on the website. So two questions, was that a good number? And if the meeting was taped or whatever, can I get the information? Is there a way for me to hear that meeting?
Uh, Mr. President, the call did take place at eleven-thirty. The Southfield Growth Corporation is the corporation that handles the day-to-day administrative activities of our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We're moving towards closing out NSP- We're moving towards closing out NSP, uh, three, and we have, uh, some additional funds and activities, uh, taking place. Uh, and one of the activities, uh, to serve low to moderate income in NSP three, we're, uh, entering, we've entered into a contract with Habitat for Humanity to build a home for an income-eligible family, meeting the fifty percent, uh, requirement. I can get you minutes, the meeting was not taped. Uh, on the call, uh, it worked, uh, I, I called in on it, uh, and, and apologies, it didn't work for you. I know it worked for, uh, City Attorney, who was with us, City Planner, Rick Lampy, and our purchasing agent. Uh, but I can certainly, uh, share with you the minutes.
Okay, that would be great. I just need to know what's going on. I would have really loved to have heard that, and I, it was just busy.
And just as we, uh, cl- close out NSP three, we're about away, a, a year away from ramping that up. Uh, and this, those are the, the, we're probably be the last activities they need to take.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Taylor, I did, that this is not to be confused with, um, the Southfield, um, Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. This is, this is, uh, the predecessor to that.
And is that a, is that a city committee?
Mr. President, uh, Mayor, I'm not sure I would use the word predecessor. These, um, the, the, the city back in two thousand eight received NSP one funds, uh, within the plan document. We established the Southfield Growth Corporation as the vehicle to do that. Uh, what Council did was authorize the formation of a corporation to expedite the, uh, corporate activities necessary. For example, the purchasing of, of real estate that was undertaken with NSP one and three, uh, the timeline. Um, you needed to, you know, be able to make an offer on a foreclosed property in a timeline that was more expedient than, uh, what the timeline is that Council operates on. But it was part of that, uh, planned activity presented in two oh eight, and I believe NSP three was twenty-ten. I wouldn't need to check that date.
Okay. All right. So you'll provide me the minutes, um-
Yes.
And everything, okay. All right. I'll look forward to reading it, and if I have any questions, I'll, I'll contact you.
Uh, you're, we'll do.
Okay. Thank you so much.
It'll probably be, um, best if we all could get the minutes, if you don't mind.
We'll do that, okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, anything else for the good of the order again before we dismiss?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Um, has there been discussions, since we're talking about, you know, reopening and what we're gonna do, about what Council will do, um, should we return to in-person meetings? And how that will look like with requirements?
Uh, yes, there has been discussions, um, not, again, not with the full Council, clearly, as of yet. Um, we're, again, taking cues from Governor Whitmer, but, um, my feeling is, and I think that, uh, and Fred and I have talked about this a bit, um, is that we, we would try to, I think we'll stay as a teleconference for as long as we possibly can, but we do need to continue. Uh, I know Ms. Banks brought this up a while back, that we need to, you know, have a, have an action plan to move back in, and so we will be, uh, having a Council discussion about that, um, fairly soon. I would say probably after the budget's approved, uh, we'll try to get that discussion moving. But, um, I just, again, just because the governor does say that we can return, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to. And, uh, so I think we have, you know, a decent amount of time, as much as we feel like we need, to, you know, get things set up the way that we want to. So we'll be soliciting days and times for people to meet and talk and get suggestions, uh, moving forward.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, along those same lines, um, are we, um, given there are perhaps gonna be some changes down the road, are we incorporating COVID into the remodeling? Or have we got an architect, HRC, or whoever was dealing with it, to incorporate some eight, COVID, um, precautions into the redesign of the chamber? I think we're gonna have to, uh, Councilman Brightwell. Um, I don't, I, I, I have not talked to them as of this point, but-
If I could?
Yes.
The architect for that has not yet been selected, but absolutely, this has changed everything.
Right. Okay, well- It'd be, it'd be a natural, I mean, we, we doing some rebuilding. We definitely need to, um, incorporate the latest, uh, precautions to make sure, you know, everybody is safe, you know, feel comfortable. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.